Okay, call to the order of the Select Board Meeting of December 12th. This is day two of two interviews for Town Administrator. Five o'clock, we have Gary J. Carrero, current co-Town Administrator and also the Treasurer, Finance Director, and I would say Collector, but we now have a Collector, so we can eliminate Collector from that phrase. You know the Board, so we won't have to introduce ourselves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
One slight request, if I may. There was a question last night that I intended to ask, but I did not. So my request is, I'd like to be able to ask that question to all four candidates. Could we, I have the question. Could we possibly send that question to the two of them last night to get a written response so we can be fair to get all four? The question regarding work at home policy is a follow-up to one of the questions from last night.
Okay.
I have the question.
I know you have the question.
I'll mention it now because, before we start.
Um.
Taking Gary's time here.
Yeah, well, no, whatever time we take. I'm going to say, don't ask the question, but send the question to them, each one of them, via email. Because it would be unfair, I think, personally, I think it would be unfair to the two others from last night because they didn't get a chance to answer that question. But you can send them a question. We all have their emails, and then you can...
I'm going to send it to Melanie right now.
Yeah, you send it to Melanie, and Melanie can send it out to all four.
We'll need a date on this now because we have a meeting on Monday.
No, it's, we can ask the response, it has to, you can send it to them, and the response has to be before, you know, say Saturday or something like that. I, yeah, because I want to make sure that whatever questions we ask, we ask everybody at the same time.
Yeah, solution. Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
All right, so the interview scheduled to last 90 minutes, it may not take the full 90 minutes. The questions that I will be asking is asked of everybody who's come before and will come after. Should take roughly 45 to 60 minutes, after which the Board will ask up any follow-up questions, specifically to any answers that you may have, or each one may have a specific question that's not asked here. And then after that, you'll be afforded some time to ask us any questions or provide a closing statement. There's no need for an opening statement, nobody has provided one. Basically, we have your resume, we know basically your beginning, so let's dive right in. Just as for an audience, this is being recorded for DCTV. It is live to department heads right now via YouTube. It will be available, all four interviews will be available at one time by DCTV after tonight, beginning tomorrow if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Yeah, tonight.
Thank you. Backroom guys. All right, so let's begin. So candidates with the proper qualifications and experience are very important, but the ability to communicate too and be inclusive with staff, volunteers, vendors, and of course our residents will make the real difference. Describe your leadership style and goals to achieve success in this position, and how you motivate and empower your team to achieve these goals.
So just at the beginning, I'd like to thank this Board for entertaining my candidacy for this position. Also, the Screening Committee that put a lot of hours into this. I think that it was quite a task, along with Melanie from the Office. So to the question, you know, coming up the ranks from being initially the Assistant Treasurer for the City of Far River, at the time a $250 million budget, and into the role that I had as Treasurer Collector for the Town of Marion, into this role as Collector, and now ultimately Finance Director and co-adjunct Town Administrator. To me, there's nothing more important than being open to not only the department heads, but to the, most importantly, to the residents of the community. I think that typically you hear management say, well, we have an open-door policy. That's great, but is that open-door policy something that the manager also has as a, just a slogan? Or is it a, you know, are you approachable? You have to be approachable in this position. And unfortunately, sometimes, and this is just the cost of the way things happen, the town just doesn't surface around 400 Sulcom Road. This town is so enormous that we have to focus outside of the walls of 400 Sulcom Road. And I think the administrative position is more of an ambassador position to those, to the residents, to the departments that are not in this Town Hall, that we need to focus on and be in communication with them constantly. So I see this role as not just an administrator, but an ambassador to those departments that are not located in Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. Just as a little bit of a follow-up and a little bit more, how will you be visible and accessible as the Town Administrator, not only to staff, but also, you know, not only to the department heads, but also to staff?
So currently, we have a, obviously, a department head meeting every month. We look to have also department meetings with the staff, one-on-one. I make it a point every day, sometimes they might think it's too much, but I go and visit the entire Finance Department. So they may not know that that's part of my cause of being in that position, but I ask the frontline staff, I ask the management, you know, do they need anything? Do they need my support? So that's just something that comes naturally to me. I think that also has to happen on an individual basis because those folks that are at the frontlines, whether you're working at DPW, whether you're working at any one of these departments, they're the ones that make this town operate, and they continue to do that. So we have to be focused on making sure that they're being, we're paying competitive wages to these folks, that we're not only, you know, listening to their needs, but it's very important that we not only listen to the management, but we also listen to the staff.
Okay, thank you. Over the past few years, the staff has voiced their concerns regarding the content of staff meetings held by the Town Administrator. How do you envision developing the content and conducting these meetings? Because minor issues with staff always comes up, hours worked, customer service expectations, town vehicles. So how, as part of that discussion, how would you address these issues before they become larger issues?
So being in some of those staff meetings, I think what the issue, where the issue lies is, it's just the number of individuals in the group. I think if it's broken down to public safety, you know, DPW, finance, if you will, small and niche groups where we can talk about the issues that, you know, relative to those departments, there'll be more one-on-one conversation, more, more the ability to address those issues, where we're not sitting in a big room with, you know, 50, 60 people, and just tossing ideas out. I think it has to be more on a smaller scale with the one-on-one with the employees.
With staff at Town Hall and other locations in the town, how do you ensure effective communication within your team, and what strategies have or will you use to ensure all team members feel included and valued?
So I'll give you an example. Prior to me taking on the Finance Director's role here, there were no department meetings, none, in the Finance Department. So I made it, I made it a goal, one of the first goals that I had was bring on the departments, bring in the Assessors' Office, the, you know, the Treasurer, the Collector, and sit in a group. Even if we sit there for an hour and we just talk about day-to-day stuff, and then talk about big picture and deadlines, it is very important to have department meetings. And it's very important for department heads to know and engage with their, engage with their employees on a day-to-day basis. If they can't do that, then, you know, they need to figure out a way to have that conciseness. But for me, I think that, and I know that the Finance Committee, the Finance Department has seen that as progression, they've seen it as positive. We know exactly what we're all working on, and we know what deadlines have to be met. So my goal as Administrator would have to be, you know, let's keep that, let's keep that going, let's keep that going with department heads and the one-on-one with the employees and staff.
Thank you. How would you handle a difficult department head or staff member, and sometimes elected officials?
So I think, first of all, the biggest thing is you have to listen. So, you know, people, people come to work and they have other issues. They could have issues at home, they could have issues with family, you know, a sick parent, child. The key is to listening, and then, you know, develop some concise and some set goals and guidelines, and then document. Document what's happened. We don't want to be in a situation where the employee feels they're at risk, nor that the town are at risk for any kind of personnel issues. But I think, don't put up a wall with the employee. Let's, let's try to work things out, and then, you know, concisely work with them and set goals and expectations.
Thank you. How do you foster effective communication and collaboration between town staff, elected officials, and the community? And if you can, share an example.
So, you know, in the day of email and now Zoom, you know, post-COVID, we've become, you know, and this is my opinion, a, you know, a workplace where we don't have the one-on-one, face-to-face conversation. And to me, I'm old-school, you know, it's pick up the phone, it's talk to someone face-to-face, have them in the office, face-to-face. And I think that's really the only way you can, you can concisely, you know, get your point across, listen to their concerns, and share examples. One of the, I'll give you an example recently here in Town Hall. We have issues, you know, sometimes residents will come in, they have, they have issues with, we just sent out a number of items for tax delinquency. And what we want to do is meet with these residents. We don't want to have to keep sending emails back and forth to residents that are maybe struggling, need payment agreements with us. And if we just shoo them off and not listen to them, then we've, in my opinion, we've done a disservice to them. My goal has always been to work with the residents and have them, you know, come in if there's an issue, always. I mean, I've visited residents' homes personally to deliver tax bills, to, you know, talk to them, one-on-one.
I've done kind of a bad job of communicating here. I just wanted to let everybody know, we do have one member who is recuperating, he is home, and he is here remote. And right now, you just see his name is Chris O'Neill, but Chris is home, so he will, he is listening, and he will be available a little bit later. My apologies. Explain your approach in incorporating community feedback into town planning initiatives.
So we have, as you know, the Engagement Portal and facilities like that that we use for feedback from the residents. I think that, and I was thinking about this, we have a lot of committees and boards that have vacancies. And having just come over the handbook that we produced, having some kind of, you know, summit, maybe, to promote the committees and boards that we have, and to have those committees and boards be in a room, have them, you know, this is what the Finance Committee does, this is what the Conservation Commission does, Health Department, and have people become interested in town government. I think the disconnect between what people, when people want to join committees, they really don't know what they want to do when they come to town, and that reciprocates to how they, how they are in their community. For a fact, you know, we have someone that's just retired CFO, they may not know much about municipal finance, but they have an interest in town. And I think it's the duty for us to bring those folks in and have them work with committees and members that have, you know, shortage. I mean, we look at some of these boards and committees that can't even meet quorum sometimes. So we, I think we need to do a little bit more work in getting the word out on what we see as potentially filling some of these roles and having that go out into the community and get people interested in town government.
Even though this is a government and municipality, we're in the business of customer service. So how do you see getting that message out to all departments and staff members?
So, as you recall, a couple of years ago, we went almost completely with the view permit application. And I was a little hesitant to speak out a little bit on that when it first came out, but to me, being in the position where we were, I'm always forward-facing with the residents, so we can't, we can't, we cannot not have the ability to service residents in Town Hall or any other branch of town. When folks have a problem, I think it's a disservice to have them maybe just call a phone call, and, you know, we get a, you know, go to this, go to that, go to this webpage. I think if they want to come in and they want to deal with an individual, they should have that opportunity. We cannot be just fully, you know, virtual. That will never work in municipal government. It will never work in any form of government because you've got residents that have needs that we can't answer on an email. You know, they want to fiscally come in Town Hall. You also have residents that are, you know, may not have access to computers. You have the elderly population in town that, you know, veterans that need one-on-one, you know, commitment to the departments that we, they expect, you know, a quick answer. So, you know, we can't, we can't just say, it's no, it's, you know, it's just, we're going virtual. And I did not speak out on it when it first came out, but as I said, I've always been in the role where we're one-to-one, we're face-to-face with the residents when they come in. When they have a tax bill issue, for instance, they don't want to listen to someone shooting back emails or on the phone, they want to be in here, finding out why.
Thank you. Budgeting and maintaining the budget is an effort by many in town, but the Town Administrator is seen as the leader. What experience do you have in developing and implementing long strategic plans for the town?
So I'll give you a couple of examples, not only here in Dartmouth, but in Westport, where I serve on the Finance Committee. Just like Dartmouth, Westport had a, you know, an aging fire station, police station, school. We, as part of that, I've been on the committee for 12, for 12 years, I chaired it for four. We, we, in the tenure that I've been on it, we developed a fire station, a school, and a police station. Here in Dartmouth, you know, the budget, as, obviously, I'm the Finance Director, as you know, the budget is seen as multifaceted. We have a lot of components of this budget. We have long-term capital now that we're finally addressing in part of that committee. We have issues where, you know, state aid is stagnant here in town, and it's been for some time, almost 15 years. And we have the lock of Proposition 2 and 1/2. So the question is, how do we maintain a budget that's level-funded but continue to give service to the residents? So with escalating costs of inflation. It's a difficult task, but what we need to do is communicate with every department, not only town departments, the schools, and all the public safety, including the fire districts. And try to work out a way that we can look forward to, you know, nobody wants the taxes raised, that's a given. But at the same time, we have to address, you know, the infrastructure that's 30, 40, 50 years old in some cases, if not more. And that's a fine balance. But it's communication to the public. It's getting the word out that these projects are not only, you know, a want, but they're a need. It's important that we have clean water, it's important that we have a school system that's competitive in the region. And that's what I've tried to, you know, accomplish over the last couple of years, being the Finance Director. Not only post-COVID, we were able to certify, as you know, the last couple, the last year, record free cash, but also maintain the town's AAA bond rating. And that was difficult through the times that we came out of post-COVID.
How do you prioritize and manage multiple complex projects within, with tight deadlines?
The first thing is prioritize. What is the most important? What is the most risk to the town? How do we develop a plan, not only to address the first project, but a timeline to develop those other projects? Because even though we may say Project A, for instance, is important, well, so are the four other products that follow. And we need timelines in place that we can address those. It's not just, you know, willy-nilly, we'll get to it when we can. We need concrete deadlines to set a lot of these projects. And in a little bit, we can talk about some of the projects, I think, that are a detriment to get this, to get moving on in town.
What are your key considerations when allocating funds for capital improvement projects?
Priority, what is the priority? Long-term capital is met. We've had some robust discussions with all departments, DPW, schools, internal departments. What is the priority to not only mostly the residents? What is the priority to the residents? Is it clean water? As I mentioned, is it a school system that's thriving? That's, you know, a school system that's one that we want to have as a top in the region? And that's going to come from the resident. We can give them that information. We've done a lot of work, we've showed what that, what that would cost going forward. And now we're prioritizing that, what we feel the priority is. But we can go to the public, and they may say, well, we prioritize is not really what they, what they consider a priority. But I think clean water and education is the top right now for this town.
Thank you. How would you handle a situation where a significant budget shortfall is discovered mid-year?
So in 2008, when I was in Far River, Mitt Romney was Governor, we addressed the nine C cuts. That was in the middle of the budget season. We, at that point, we were looking at over a $30 million cut to state aid right away, in a matter of weeks. We then had to potentially lay off police, fire, and school. What the mayor did at the time, Mayor Lambert, he asked for a contribution of time from employees to give up some of their pay, you know, a week, two weeks of pay. We then met that obligation. There were, there were hundreds of employees that came forward and did that. You know, and that, to me, was the community getting together to save, to save jobs. And when budgets are cut mid-year, it's devastating. It is completely devastating. And not only is it devastating for the employees, it's more devastating for the residents, who expect services, public safety, education, and now that's cut mid-year. That's completely devastating. So we hope that, and, you know, as we go through, I budget conservatively when we put the budgets together, making sure that, you know, we have enough for free cash, we have enough for our capital items going forward, and that we continue to watch the trend going forward. As I mentioned, state aid is not, we're not getting some golden parachute from Boston for state aid, but we have to be conservative when we build these budgets so that we don't, we make sure that we have other monies available for capital.
So speaking of building a budget, how would you approach identifying cost-saving measures within a municipal budget while maintaining the services that you're going to be developed in the budget and present a comprehensive annual budget?
So every year, every year we put out the budget, we ask for a level-funded, level services budget. And I've always said, as we go forward, inflation is something that's constantly ticking away. How do we still perform a level services, level-funded budget? We ask the departments to do the best they can with the funds that we receive. We ask them to be, you know, proactive and be a little bit, you know, cost savings. Can we share some abilities within each department? Can we look at some initiatives where we combine positions in some cases? And can we, can we do some cost-saving analysis? We've done that in the last budget, and I think that's maybe what you saw, the increase to free cash. We looked at rolling back some of our items where we hadn't used capital and rescinded some of the warrant articles that we had looked at. But we always ask the departments to be conservative, if in fact, we have to be competitive with fees, you know, so on and so forth. So we do ask that every year, and we do get a lot of input from department heads.
Describe your position on the balance between environmental and natural resource protection, economic growth, municipal revenues, and how would you achieve that balance?
Dartmouth is very lucky to be sitting on the coast of New England, just as Westport is and South Coast region. We have a lot of resources in town, Buzzards Bay Coalition, we have the NHRT, and folks come to Dartmouth because of that. And we want to maintain that competitive advantage when we, when we have those issues with any kind of grant opportunities that we can get. It, you know, we have a situation here in Dartmouth where we, we, that's an attraction for a lot of people. That is an attraction for a lot of people to come to town. We want to make sure that we are partners with them. We want to make sure that anything we can do to help them, advance them, and, you know, promote their programs as much as we can. As far as economic development, we're very lucky to have the retail space that we have in this town, extremely lucky. If you look at the Route 6 corridor and Florence Corner Road, you look at projects that, the mall, for instance, you know, close relationship that I've had with the management at the mall over the years that I've been here. Out of the portfolio that they have, Prit Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust, it is one of their top-performing malls that is, that are left in their portfolio. They are a huge contribution to this, to this town, over $80 million in assessed value, $4 million in taxes each year. So we want to do everything we can to support those businesses in that area, not only there, on Elm Street, Bridge Street, whether you're a mom and pop or a big box store. We want to make sure that we do everything we can to make Dartmouth a business-friendly community. And that takes, you know, a lot of outreach. It takes a lot of one-on-one with a lot of these companies that may want to make Dartmouth their home, but it also, you know, we also have to remember that these businesses in town are employing Dartmouth residents. So we want to make sure that these businesses are flourishing, everything we can. I have always envisioned an economic task force, development task force, because you can only rely on the chamber for so much, where it would involve business owners in town, you know, some town employees, to discuss ways that we can make Route 6 more attractive, where we have an inventory of item, inventory of businesses that have left, where can we find a niche to replace those businesses? Is it now a more residential mixed-use business portfolio like you see in Natick, at the Natick Mall? You have residences there, people have the attraction now with living close to where they're shopping. So I think that that is something that in the next three to four years, the town really has to address. And we have the capacity to do that in that area, and I hope that we can get enough departments together and enough outreach from the community to make some of these goals a reality.
Perfect. What experience do you have in securing grants?
So when I was in the city of Far River, we worked closely with the grant, actually, my office that worked closely with the grant writer, she sat in our office. And we, we were constantly searching for grants, whether it was for, you know, at the time, we were doing the federal, the issue with, we had the contamination to the Taunton River. So we were looking for a lot of federal grants at the time, the CSO project, which at the time was $250 million, which morphed into almost a billion-dollar project under the Lambert administration. So we, I worked closely with the grant writer to establish a lot of those grants. We received close to $200 million in grants from the federal government to bore out that hole into the Taunton River for the CSO discharge, because we were getting severe fines. And that's on a larger scale. There were smaller grants that we also worked on, police grants, firefighter grants that I was a part of.
Pretty much know the answer to this question, but since it's a question we ask of everybody, what experience do you have managing and prioritizing the use of enterprise funds revolving accounts for free cash?
So Dartmouth is, Dartmouth is a unique community where we have a lot of enterprise funds, as you know, DCTV, Water Sewer Enterprise, Trash. And they're segregated that way for a reason. At one time, Town Meeting decided that those funds should be in separate pools and separate, you know, separate entities to the town. So the management of those funds obviously is coming from, from the DPW, the Board, and my office as far as the investment is concerned on those. We certify the free cash for each one of those, we present that to capital every year, and then the department head comes and proposes their use for some of those capital items.
So working cooperatively with all town departments is key to the success of the town. The Public Works Department includes water, sewer, solid waste, and recycle- solid waste and recycling, fleet management, construction, road maintenance. How would you work with the department and board to prioritize projects?
So as being one of the biggest departments in town, DPW in this community is quite important. The land area that they cover, the maintenance that they encompass on all these roads, whether it's in the winter, whether they're cutting grass, or they're putting up signs, you name it, you know, they have a robust program. Trash, for instance, you talk about trash. You look at some communities that have outsourced trash. And, you know, is that the way to go? Do we want to have residents calling a third party that has to deal with trash removal? You know, I always thought that there was always, even though it's a big department, this department is really one-on-one with the residents. And from what I've seen, you know, being at some of the board meetings, dealing with the department head, this is a crucial department, because not only are they, again, running highway, they're also running the water and sewer systems in this town. So that's important. As I said, I think one of the priorities that we need to look at is the water quality in town. We need to look at where we're going with that, what we can do to fund that, you know, through the rates. And I know that we look at that every single year, and the budget is a big piece of that. We want to make sure that residents are, you know, paying what they should be paying as far as the water is concerned and all those enterprise funds. But we want to make sure that we're delivering quality water.
You did mention in the last answer, so I'm going to ask you to expand upon what is your view on municipal-run utility services and infrastructure versus outsourcing to private operations?
So the city of Far River, back in 2012, I believe, had purchased a whole fleet of trash vehicles to the tune of about $25 million. They then decided to go to a private hauler. They had incurred debt on all those vehicles. They kept the debt, kept the employees, but yet went to the private hauler. The problem with outsourcing, there's pros and cons. Pros are if your plan is to, I don't want to say eliminate the employee, but get away from having that employee on, you're saving the benefits. The con is if you're not servicing those residents, they're still Dartmouth residents. They're still residents of the community. You're dealing with, the resident is now dealing with a third party. Collection problems, collection agencies calling them. The one-on-one, the customer service is not there anymore when they do that. So they did it in Far River. There's been communities that have done it and outsourced trash. You look at the city of Boston, they did it in some segments of their city. It does not work. In my opinion, you still need to have the one-on-one with the residents. You have to have that customer service where they can call Dartmouth and have that resolved internally.
Thank you. The aging population in Dartmouth is on the rise, highlighting a pressing need for increased services and support at the council and agent. The growing senior demographic necessitates proactive measures to enhance the quality of life and well-being of our aging residents. How would you prioritize those services, supporting the aging population within town, and collaborate with local agencies and town departments to also address the homelessness in our town?
So I've had the opportunity to work closely with our Council on Aging Director on a couple of initiatives. When folks come into our office and finance, the first thing, if they're struggling, the first thing we ask them is what opportunities may they have, whether it's through Bristol elders, whether it's through some kind of grant program or funding source that they can use and utilize, not only them, but the veterans. So I have a sense of where they are, and I can direct them to the proper channels. We, as you know, I had the taxpayer assistance program, which was defunct for a little while. We revamped that. That helps residents as the funds are needed. That's a donation-based. We recently gave out $750 or $500 per resident. It's picked on an income basis. We work closely with the assessors office, elderly exemptions. So there are opportunities. We want to make sure that all residents know that there are opportunities. Sometimes, and it's no fault of the department, it's just that some residents just don't know that there are opportunities for that. And we can advertise that and talk about it till the cows come home. But, you know, the outreach and the council on aging is a tremendous job. But there are still some people that, you know, just may fall through the cracks that they don't know. So, you know, it is imperative that this position as administrator be, again, as the ambassador through residents that may qualify for programs like this. It is important, if we're going to push through initiatives as far as multimillion-dollar projects, like the school's water treatment plant, that we address the most vulnerable, you know, residents in town. That is imperative, because the population is growing. I saw a statistic in my town, 56% of the population is, you know, 55 or 58 and over. And I'm sure that the same statistic is here in Dartmouth. We have to make sure that that's a priority.
School department represents more than half the town budget. How would you go about developing a relationship with the school department and the school committee to promote the needs, their needs, along with the ever-growing needs of the town overall?
Working closely with the finance committee over the last couple of years, we've seen how imperative it is to address the school department's budget. We've asked for a lot of data. They've come back, they've supplied that data. I've been working closely this go-around with this, Jim Kylie, Superintendent of Schools, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, rather, and want to work on an ongoing basis with them, more closely than we've ever had before. And, you know, sometimes it's communication. And if that falls apart through the process, we've done a disservice to ourselves when it comes time to put the budget together. So my comment to Mr. Kylie was, let's keep that dialogue open. Let's see where we are with state aid. Let's see where we are when the budget falls. And let's make sure that we continue the discussion, that we don't drop the ball, that we make sure that going into the budget for FY '26, we've addressed the issues that you have. You know, let us know exactly what you need. Let the school department come to me and say, listen, you know, this is what we need. If it's $3 million, $4 million, let's be honest about that. And, you know, that's really what we need to have going forward, because ultimately, the residents need to know that. And they need to make a decision on how they fund the budget ultimately at town meeting.
Thank you. Land use permitting has become very complicated for owners and contractors alike. They must navigate the interests that town departments must administer as delegated by state or local legislative process. How will you ensure that the departments of the town are functioning as a collaborative unit and not in a vacuum to ensure interdepartmental matters are coordinated with land use permitting and will not lead to fractured functionality that will result in adverse relations with the public, fester in efficiency of the departments, and create added costs to the town and property owner?
We want to make the process as streamlined as possible. With the view permit program that we have, sometimes we feel that we live in bubbles and we live in, you know, silos. We can't control the regulations that the state or the federal government puts on us. But we can always work with the residents or builders in town to make sure that we make this process as streamlined as possible. And when it falls apart or when we see things start to go astray, we address it. What we don't want is, you know, developers and people that want to do business in town saying, well, we don't want to do business in Dartmouth anymore. We want to, because if they're not going to do business here, you know they're going to go somewhere else. So we want to make this as streamlined as possible. As of recent, you know, we want to make sure that we're following the law and we're following the regulations. But we're able to bend a little bit when it comes to making sure that the landowners and people that want to develop here in town have the ability to do that.
What are the key challenges regarding smart growth facing towns like Dartmouth? And how would you address them?
So you can look at communities that are progressive towards the city, like towards Boston, the outskirts of Boston. I don't think we ever want to be a Wellesley. We don't ever want to be one of those, you know, a Natick or those communities. But what we want to do is have a plan in place, through the master plan, that, you know, addresses growth and addresses where we want to be the next five, 10 years. And that's housing. That means, you know, infrastructure improvements. And it means keeping our retail space robust, but also keeping Dartmouth as, you know, the small-town feel. You can travel off of Route 6 and get lost in the back roads of town. And I think that's a feel that the residents really want, and they want to continue in this community. They want to make sure that they can do all their, you know, business in one section, but have the ability to keep Dartmouth as, you know, their home. I mean, nobody wants to have, you know, big box stores in certain locations. So I think the design of town, the growth moving forward, we're lucky. And I keep saying this, you know, Dartmouth is extremely lucky to have the corridor on Route 6 and the placement of that area. And that's where the growth starts. It starts from there. And, you know, it may change in five years. It may be all medical. It may be, you know, we may have, you know, solar facilities here in town. That's hard to determine right now. But we went through the phase where we had medical, and that's kind of fizzled out. But we need to keep on point, making sure that we're staying up to trends and inviting those businesses in town to engage, you know, in open space that we have available for them to do business.
Okay. Now, final category of questions. This is pretty much more specific to the position. Technically, they all are specific to the position. But explain your understanding of relevant state laws and regulations impacting municipal operations.
Dealing with, over the last 25 years of my career, it's been all regulations. Not only from the Department of Revenue, Department of Labor, every single department that you can think of that not only the state and federal government puts regulations on a municipality I've had to deal with, I've come across. The regulations that the state puts forward are very deadline-based, very time-based. As you know, you know, there are things that have to be done at certain times of the year. There's no, there is no if, ands, or buts. And the thing is, in their infancy, you know, in their, what they, they haven't really thought about, in my, you know, this is just me looking at this 50,000-foot view, that the ability for municipalities to do what they did, baby, in 1990, is not the ability that they could do now, because there's so much more regulation now. There's so much more, not only from the DESI from the schools, from, you know, the DOY, Division of Local Services, so on and so forth. So with limited staff, that becomes a lot harder to accomplish. I'd have to say in Dartmouth that most of our deadlines, and if not all of our deadlines that we have regulations on, are met. And that's pretty remarkable. I'm always amazed by, even in finance, to have certified free cash that is done every single time, you know, no issues. Having tax bills put out, no issues. And every other regulation that the town puts forward, that, excuse me, that the state or the federal government puts forward, we really had no issues with any of those. That's what we strive for. We don't want federal government or the state to be knocking on our door, wondering why we haven't accomplished tasks.
How would you stay informed about emerging trends in local government best practices?
So I'm a member of MMA. I join their conference every single year. Not only that, I'm also MCTA, Collective Treasurer Association, and also on multiple listservs. Not only that, we, you know, I have a group of individuals in other municipalities and colleagues that I talk to. And so I think that that's a good resource. MMA is a great resource with not only, you know, municipal government, but everything that involves and revolves around municipal government. They've been in service for a while, and they're dedicated to the communities of Massachusetts. So that's my main resource of information. Also, Department of Revenue websites and so on and so forth.
You already stated it, but I want to make you state it again, because that's the question. Do you currently have any designations or credentials that are essential for this position?
So I've taken HR certifications. I have certified financial planner certifications, MCTA certifications. And on the personal side, I have aviation enthusiast. So I'm certified pilot, too. So nothing to do with this position. Nothing to do with us. I can get you to an airport pretty quick.
Interesting. Okay. That's one that did not know, didn't see that one coming. As you know, there's always more work than time to do it. So how do you go about organizing your day?
Well, if you come by my office at about 8:00 or 9:00 at night, you'll still see the light on. So I don't leave until the, you know, until the job is done, really. It's, to me, it's, you know, we have deadlines that we have to meet. And sometimes those deadlines, my goal is not to be the day before doing something. It's a lot of planning. It's a lot of, especially in the role that I have, it's a lot of, we have a deadline here. We need to start working on this now. And so my take has been always, dealing with municipal finance and in municipal government, is that you really don't leave until the job is done. And that's really what sustained me over the last, you know, 24 years, 25 years, is that you've got to put the time in. You've got to be committed to wanting to put the time in. And ultimately, you know, whether we touch finance, whether we're picking up trash, whether we're dealing with water, sewer, you know, name it, we're ultimately dealing, we're ultimately working for the resident. That's what we do. And I think that sometimes we lose track of that when, you know, we're shuffling around numbers on a spreadsheet. But I've never lost track of that.
All right. And last of the set of questions. How, is there anything that you would like to know about your candidacy that wasn't included in these questions?
Could you repeat?
In other words, what would you like us to know about you or your candidacy for the position that wasn't included in any of the questions?
Okay. So, you know, I think if you look at my progression of, you know, where I started in municipal government, I was in a, I worked for private industry. I worked for Textron Providence. And didn't really want to sit behind a cubicle all day long and stare at, you know, cloth walls. So, you know, the position came open in Far River. I thought it was an opportunity to deal with public, which I enjoyed. Then progressed along the way. So the point I'm trying to make is, I've been, I've done it. So I've seen, I've rolled up my sleeves, you know. People were like, whoa, how can, you know, for instance, you're the treasurer, tax collector. Why are you behind the counter processing payments? I mean, it's just, you have to be visible to the public. You have to be able to, when the public is out there and they get a bill, for instance, or, you know, there's an issue, they want to see you. It's your name on the bill. It's you are the department head. They want to talk to you directly. And so I've always said it was an opportunity to deal with the public, but you have to make that a reality. You have to know, the public has to know that you're available for them, always available for them. You know, it's not just, as I said, you have to be approachable.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the next section, which is the questions from board members. I want to start off way to my right. Mr. O'Neill, are you available?
I am available, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Gary, thanks for accommodating me by Zoom tonight. Quick question for you. I've got a couple, Sean. The co-administrated position, you've been in a little bit now. Got your feet wet. What parts have you enjoyed the most? And what parts could you not deal with again for the rest of your life? What's been most difficult for you?
What a loaded question.
Yeah, really.
I think, you know, sharing tasks sometimes, and we talked about this, I think, initially when both, you know, Chris and I took on this position, when, when both, you know, Chris and I took on this position, sharing tasks are for just us to get through the day-to-day operations. Having ideas and a vision takes one person, and, but a team of people. And I think that the struggle, you know, we'll talk about a little bit of the struggle, is we're sharing these duties every day, and we're, we're putting out fires, basically, and that's what we're doing. But, but I think going forward, one, we want to have that one individual that can be the leader and work with the, that other individual and be a team, along with every other department in this town and every other employee that works for the town. So that's been the struggle, I guess, you know, and we both agreed on this when we first took this position. We weren't going to make drastic changes, we weren't going to, you know, buy, you know, buy aircraft carriers, if you will, we were just going to, you know, maintain the level of service that the residents expect, and I think that we've, we've done that, you know, in the short term.
On another point, we've got some open positions. Gary, as you know, do you have any ideas kind of top of mind that, about fostering a better environment for the, for the current town employees, not just the department heads, but, but everybody in town? As the cheerleader, the ambassador, any ideas on how you would, you'd like to try and better the environment for them going forward?
So the first thing is, we have to be, we have to maintain a competitive advantage in the workforce. As you know, post-COVID, everything changed, everything got flipped around and upside down. We've got to make sure that we are listening to our employees, the frontline employees, we have to make sure that we're accommodating to some of their needs, and we also have to make sure that, you know, when, when we're looking at recruiting people, that we get the best possible person for the position. That is, that is key, that we have, we maintain that level of competency amongst our other communities. As you know, you know, communities are stealing not only teachers from other communities, but every other, every position post-COVID. So we have to make, make sure that we maintain competitiveness, and that means listening to the needs of the employees. We're about to do a reclass of the positions, we hadn't done one in about six years, so it's going to be interesting to see what that brings out. And we want to make sure that when we're looking at these positions, as you mentioned, we have a few open right now. In the short term, in the last month, in the absence we've, of the CO, I was able to, we were able to foster the town planner. We're now going to hire a foreman for Parks and Rec, and we're looking at, now putting out as the H R director is, you know, given a notice, we're looking to go ahead and recruit that. So we, we may not be able to change in the immediate, you know, to the revolving door, if you will, but the goal going forward is that we have, we remain competitive, and I keep saying that, but that's really important, and that we listen to our employees, and we make sure that we're giving them the resources to do their, to do their jobs, and they want to come to work. I mean, they really want to come to work and, and be proud of where they work, and that's going to reciprocate to the residents of Dartmouth. I think that's important.
Thank you, Gary.
All set, Chris?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Heidi?
So Gary, that's all right. Gary, if we were to Google you, Google you, is there anything that we'd find out about you that you should explain to us this evening?
No. If you Googled me, you'll probably see that the transition from the city of Fall River, a couple of older pitches, younger pitches, probably, you'll see that, you know, my transition to the town of Marion, and then here to the, to the, to the town of Dartmouth. And, you know, there'll be nothing, nothing negative on it, I hope not. I mean, I Googled myself, I think, a couple of weeks ago, to be honest. But, so, yeah, I think that you'll see the progression of my career over the last 20-some years, and I'm proud of that. So I think that, you know, Google's a great tool, and most people use it, and it's an indication of what, what kind of person you're going to get. And, you know, it doesn't circumvent H R, but it's a good and clear indication of the kind of quality person you're going to, you're going to have.
Thank you.
I Google my name, I come up with a Christian singer, so it's not me. Mr. Talawaf?
Thank you. Thanks, Gary. You mentioned the term ambassador, it's a catchy little adjective, and also you mentioned a follow-up with the D P W, which is our largest department minus the schools, which has its own infrastructure. Your relationship in this new job would change dramatically from what it is now to working with the D P W. Can you expound upon that and how you see that happening going forward?
Over the last year with your leadership, we've developed the long-term capital, and I think that that's been an eye-opener, not only for, for me, but for, I think, a lot of departments in town to clearly define what the goals are for this town going forward, and what the needs are for this town going forward. One may say one need is more important than the other, but as you mentioned, D P W, the largest, probably the, one of the largest departments beyond, behind the schools, is a, is a key component to the everyday life of residents in this community. Whether or not you think it is, it is. You know, people want clean water, they want to be able to flush the toilet, they want to make sure that things are working properly. They have issues with roadways, it needs to be addressed. So they may be the, you know, the quiet child in the room, but they are the most visible child in the room, because they need to, you know, the community doesn't run without, you know, a robust D P W. And we have some challenges going forward. We have to address the issue of, as I mentioned, aging infrastructure. I've taken a visit to the facility, I can't, I just can't believe that the facility isn't the condition that it is, and it's still ma, it's still maintained and runs. And that's a credit to not only the board, but to the department head and the other employees that are down there, working day-to-day to make sure that that facility keeps, keeps operating. So it is important, I think we need to develop a plan. We have a water management plan that we're looking at developing, and that's one of the goals that I, I think should be happening in the, in the near future. But we, we cannot just, again, because it's, because these infrastructure and these, these facilities are so old, we cannot just ignore them anymore, because at one point in time, they will not work, and then we have major issues on our hands. So it needs to be addressed, and I hope to work closely with the D P W, if given the opportunity, and even closer now with the board, to address some of these issues with the plan going forward.
Second question, follow-up also on grants. You mentioned that you were very active in Fall River and not, not as active here. In terms of our short and long-term needs, grants are going to become that much more important, and managing grants, how to do it, maybe even software that might be available to give us a better handle on how we do it and where we stand on grants. Can you comment on that, Gary?
Yeah, so the state has a new, you know, a grant program that we use and, to, to allow us to get fire, fire grants, for instance, for police grants, for, you know, for cameras, or vests, or bulletproof vests, those are just some examples. It'll be very important that we, we use grants in, in combination with financing for these major projects, especially water and sewer. Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, Clean Water Trust, has a low-interest program that they put out there for some of these projects. But in order to sell it to the public, in order to have these projects go, move forward with the public, to the public, we better make sure that we've looked at and turned over every rock, we better make sure that we've applied for every grant to make it less impactful to the, to the residents and their rates. So it's going to be extremely important in combination with, if in fact we move forward, conventional borrowing and the grant programs that the state and federal government offer to, to the town, as they did in Fall River for the C S O project. That's going to be extremely important.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gary, thanks. Speaking of issues on Route Six and development of that area, that corridor is very important. We have a 40B program on the books, three to four years in the making, not a shovel has, is in the ground yet. What, what can you do as the new town administrator to, to, number one, to get that project going? Because there's millions of dollars in revenue that we've lost in those three years.
Living half a mile away from the project, I, I drive by it every day, and I know what it, what it looks like, what it's, what needs to be done over there, and quite frankly, I think the project's taken too long. It's been three to four years with an open field, well, open field now, and, and dirt and dust everywhere. My approach to this would be, and we had a couple of pre-construction meetings out there, is we need to set timelines, we need to set hard dates, not only for the developer, but for the town, where we meet and we have a progression moving forward. What we don't want is this project to keep lagging on for three or five years. That will make this project close to a 10-year project that we haven't really done anything with. So my goal would be, and having talked to one of the attorneys involved in this, is going forward, having hard deadlines, meeting those deadlines, is the town at fault, are we at risk, or is the developer at fault? We need, we, we need to have that. We, that, that is detriment to this project. And, you know, affordable housing is an issue in the, in this country, and we can't say that we have affordable housing issues, but yet we're sitting on a plot of land where we're building, want to build affordable housing. It need, it needs to be addressed. And, you know, if, if I was, if I was chosen as the next town administrator, that's going to be the, in, in the first 30 days, not 90 days, the first 30 days, to make sure that we have some kind of schedule moving forward.
With that being said, I would ask you about your top three priorities, so that being one, number one, what other two might you do in the first 90 days?
Well, in the first 90 days, as you know, the, the town is opening up its negotiation contracts, we need to have that done, we need to have that done for the budget process. We need to also look at the project for the, the dog park, that needs to be, that needs to be moved forward, that's been something that's been lagging. And then the budget process itself, those are the immediate needs right now that we need to address as far as moving forward. But the 40B project is something that is a concern of mine, it needs to be on one of the top three, if not four.
Thank you. All set? All right, so basically, we've come to the end, so do you have plenty of time to ask us any questions or provide any additional information about your candidacy?
Well, how much time do we have? Half an hour, no, I won't. No, I just, I just want to take the opportunity to thank, again, the board, the committees that I've worked with over the last, you know, six years, mostly in the last two years too, with being in this position, and even more so now as the co-interim. Dartmouth is a great community, I think Dartmouth has a lot of, you know, hidden potential that we haven't even uncovered yet, especially in the, in the corridor, as I mentioned, in Route Six, segregated retail space that we can hopefully get committees involved in, outside interest involved in. I speak to a lot of home, a lot of business owners in, in town, and they have great ideas for what should come into Dartmouth. But if we're not promoting ourselves, then those are just ideas and not ever going to become reality. So that's, that's, to me, is a big function of this town. 20% of this revenue that we collect comes from commercial business. If you remember back in the day, we had a single tax rate, where Walmart was paying the same as Mary Smith, and, you know, we've gotten away from that because we want to promote business in town. We want to make sure that they're able to do business, strive in town, and be able to, you know, employ residents and have residents be able to continue to live in, in here with competitive wages. You know, again, I just, I want to just reiterate that I'm, I'm happy where I am, I'm, you know, this is a community that I think that, like the town that I lived in, I live in for the last 51 years, is liking kind to Dartmouth, and these are the gems of the South Coast, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, we, we have a lot of opportunity, plenty of opportunity, we just have to make sure that we, we work with the residents, we work with the departments and administration to make sure that those realities, the goals become reality.
All right, well, thank you for your candidacy, number one, and thank you for being here, because, you know, we know this isn't the easiest thing, you know, I know the, the lights aren't hot, but it's still, it's a hot seat. It is the intention of the board to go through the, the interviews and then think about it over the weekend. And Monday, Monday night, the board will be discussing where we're going to go from here. Okay? Thank you, Gary, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Gary. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it, man. All right, so we will take, I don't want to take a 25-minute break.
10 minutes.
Is he here?
He's here.
Okay.
10 minutes.
All right, we'll take a 10-minute break, about quarter past six, we'll have him come in. So do what you got to do for 10 minutes. So, do what you got to do for ten minutes. Okay, our final interview for the town administrator posts. We have Sean E. Kadine, currently the town administrator in the town, the wonderful town of Seekonk. To introduce ourselves, I'm Sean McDonald, Chairman of the Board.
Heidi Brooks.
Stan Mickelson.
Dave Tattelbaum.
And remote and recovering from surgery is Christopher O'Neill. And Chris.
Sean, how are you? Thanks for coming in.
For having me.
All right, the interview is scheduled, basically, we have a set of questions we've asked every single candidate so far. You're going to get the same set. Roughly forty-five, sixty minutes, depends upon, you know, the response time and whatnot. So, just relax. You have your essential water there, we provided another water, so, you know, ready to go. And after that, the board will ask up any follow-up questions on answers that you may have provided, or they have pretty much a set of questions themselves that they've asked everybody. And then after that, you'll be afforded the time to ask us any questions or provide any additional information. So, you ready?
I am.
All right, here we go. All right, so candidates with the proper qualifications and experience are very important, but the ability to communicate and to be inclusive with staff, volunteers, vendors, and of course, our residents will make the real difference. So, describe your leadership style and goals to achieve success in this position, and how do you motivate and empower your team to achieve these goals?
So, first, let me begin by, I feel like I already know you folks have been binge-watching the Board of Selectmen meetings, so thank you for the opportunity. So, the business we're in is serving people, right? So, it's a people-oriented business. And my management style is very similar to that, so very collaborative. I truly believe in building a team. That's something I'm known for. So, part of that, in building a team, is a lot of communication and collaboration. So, I think from, you know, the standpoint of customer service, residents, down to the department heads, and more importantly, to the Board of Selectmen, it's always about communication. Setting the goals, you know, the goals I think need to be worked upon by the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, and then also the input from department heads to really establish what the goal is for the town and the community. And then from there, it's really just leading by action. That's the biggest way I tend to lead, is by action. A lot of people like to talk, I like to support my department heads, give them the resources that they need, find out what it is that they need and their staff needs in order to achieve their internal, personal goals as well. And when we start talking about goals, I, you know, we start doing evaluations, building goals upon evaluations. One of the biggest things that I try to stress for department heads is also to find a personal goal. When we start talking about people, it's essential to understand that they need to have that work-life balance, make sure that some of the, at least one goal, that they're really being selfish about it and thinking about themselves as opposed to the community in order to have them grow and, at least, especially from a professional development standpoint. That's important to me. So, long story short, really just by action and supporting staff.
How will you be visible and accessible as the town administrator to not just the department heads, but also to the frontline staff?
So, open-door policy. I think you, some town administrators make the mistake of just staying in the office, and I think the job inherently requires you to be in the office, dealing with phone calls, emails, things of that nature. But it's important to get out and communicate and go to various departments. I do that on a daily basis. I believe in department head meetings. I kind of move away from larger department meetings, I think there's more to be said about smaller individual department head meetings. So, I established inspectional services, so we'll have the Building Department, Conservation, the Planning Department coming in, discussing what's going on in their departments. Employee appreciation days, I think those are important, those types of communications and interaction. In terms of being visible, I think it's important to be visible in the community as well. So, that's one thing that I take pride in. You know, I'll go to the Counseling on Aging, I'll serve the seniors when they have a function, make my way over to the library and make sure that I'm visible and talking to not only the constituents and the residents, but also to the staff. I do a lot of communication via email as well. I'm constantly, you know, congratulating employees on their anniversaries. So, every time an anniversary comes, work anniversary comes up, there's an email from me, just so that they know I'm accessible. And as I mentioned before, my employees know that my door is always open, so at any point, they have the opportunity to come in and have a conversation, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent.
Over the, over the past few years, the staff has voiced concerns regarding the content of staff meetings and that are held by the town administrator. How do you envision developing the content and conducting these meetings? Because some of the minor issues, or some of the issues that staff has, you know, are work hours, customer service-related, town vehicles, you know, myriad of problems such as that. So, in developing the content and conducting these meetings, how would you also address these issues so that they would become bigger issues?
Well, one, I think you got to deal with issues as they arise. I think a lot of times, folks have a tendency to push off some of the issues and not address them right away because they're either difficult conversations that be had, but it's important to have those discussions. But in terms of department head meetings, again, I changed the strategy because I've had all the department heads come into the meeting, but I quickly found that they weren't productive, they were wasting people's time, and what you tend to get is what you can get in an email, simple reports. You know, my planner would come in, tell me what's going on with a subdivision, but there wasn't a whole lot of substance behind that. And so, you just get a robotic meeting from department heads, and then nobody's walking away with anything. So, we switched that up a little bit. Me and the assistant town administrator, we said we needed to change what the approach was. And so, what we ended up doing for the larger department heads, department head meetings, is including a presentation that would help to have some type of professional development. So, we would either be, have a quick training or refresher course on maybe a UNIS, whether it's Excel. We've had speakers come in to talk about mental health, mindfulness, how to deal with stress in the workplace. So, we try to change it up a little bit more and make it more engaging, so it's productive. I think anytime we just have a meeting, just have meetings, and there's no outcome from it, it's wasting everybody's time. Part of, part of the setting up the agenda is really identifying some issues that might be coming up that folks may want to, want to hear and deal with. Outside of that, it's just quarterly meetings with public safety, it's quarterly meetings with the finance team, quarterly meetings with inspectional services, and then you get more of an intimate conversation about what's truly going on in those departments, some issues and concerns that they may have. So, if they're sharing concerns about staffing, we can have those conversations and discussions from a financial standpoint, also from an analytical standpoint to see if it makes more sense, or can we do some cross-training to work on some, some ideas to kind of help other departments. So, that's really the strategy that, and approach I usually take.
With staff in Town Hall and other locations in town, how do you ensure effective communication within the team, but also what strategies do you have or will you use to ensure that everyone, including, you know, our satellite offices, feel included and valued?
Yeah, so that's just the day-to-day communications. It's a lot of emails coming from me, picking up the telephone, having simple conversations. Again, I do a lot of site visits. We've got a number of locations, so Public Safety in Seekonk is right on the side of Town Hall, so it's a two-minute walk, so I'll typically walk over there, have a conversation with the police chief, fire chief, the director of communications. I'm also part of the interview process over there, so they see me a lot in terms of the public safety building. Senior Center, again, I'm always invited over there for various functions, so serving the seniors. Our Veterans Agent's over there, so I'm having conversations with him. And then the library, a number of programs, so I'm constantly out there, having those conversations, and when I'm there, I'm making sure that I'm having those discussions with all the employees. And again, I think part of the communication is just, is the simple things. Like I said, is the emails recognizing employees' anniversary, letting them know that they have the ability to come into the office and have simple conversations with me. You know, if they're coming over to Town Hall to do some, deliver some bills or documents and things of that nature, when they're in the hallway, stopping, having those conversations, making them organically feel like it's a partnership. We can't force it, you know, if I, every morning, decide that I'm going to walk down the other end of Town Hall and just check in on everybody, the employees know that it's not sincere. So, I'm big on making sure that it's organic. We need to make sure that that relationship is truly organic, and people understand that. They know right from the, from the beginning if you truly mean what you say. Because a lot of leadership courses will tell you that it's all about a team, 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 and there's no action behind that, it just sounds good. I think if you talk to any of my department heads, the first thing they'll tell you is that they feel really supported by myself and my staff. And I often get criticized sometimes from the board that I'm overly protective of department heads, which I am, but I also hold them accountable for their actions. But again, it's those simple interactions that you have, and seeing somebody in the parking lot, having that conversation, that, those are the conversations and communications that go a long way to really feel like people belong as part of a team.
Great, thank you. How would you handle a difficult department head member, staff member, or an elected official?
Which would you like me to take first? The two separate, two separate, two separate ways I would, I would handle it. So, difficult employees, so the first thing, and I started off saying that we're in a people business, and I think the most important part of managing, and the most difficult part of managing, is managing people. And that's really the responsibility of the town administrators, to make sure that that's done well. But the biggest part is having empathy. So, when you have a difficult employee or department head, the first thing you need to be able to do is listen. You need to understand and listen to why it is they're doing what they're doing, try to understand and see it from their perspective, have conversations, and that's where that open line of communication comes from. At that point, it's, again, not shying away from difficult conversations, but being able to articulate, you know, what the expectations are, why we're having the conversation, and making sure that everybody's on the same page. And if we're not on the same page, is it a lack of communication from myself? Do I need to do a better job of communicating? How do I change, you know, what the issue is? And if it's solely just on the department head or the individual, then it's just clarifying and identifying and clearly articulating that, you know, X, Y, Z is the issue, the expectation is this, moving forward, we need to have those, you know, we need to see some change and improvements. And if it doesn't change there, then it's going to be progressive discipline. But first, it's always a conversation, because I don't, I don't think everything needs to lead to a formal, verbal reprimand. But you should have those conversations, make sure you understand, because there may be some miscommunication, and that's just, you know, you're clearing up that type of communication, and then there's some changes. So, if you can have those early conversations, that's great. If not, it's, again, progressive discipline from that standpoint, written, I mean, verbal written, and then suspension as it's, as it's needed. But hopefully with the initial conversation that that changes. For elected officials, that's always a challenge. I try to remind elected officials, number one, your authority only falls with the board. You have no authority as a single individual, so, you know, try to calmly identify that and, you know, work that into the, to the conversation. But I think it's, you just need to stay firm, and sometimes you need to push back, and there's a way to push back, and there's a way not to push back, and especially when you're dealing with elected officials. I think it's important to understand that they're elected, they've got to serve their constituency, and we're all here again to serve, in this case, the town of Dartmouth. But there's a way to do it, and I, and I think- But there's a way to do it. And I think part of the elected body is being a team and not putting them on the pedestal, saying, okay, this is where they are. It's, we as the town of Dartmouth are moving in one direction, and we should be moving in the same direction. So if there is an issue, we need to figure it out and address it. But again, those are, those conversations need to happen early on. You can't have the same behavior take place, take place, and then think after the hundredth time, you're gonna be able to have that conversation, and they're gonna be okay with it. The first time you see it and recognize it, a conversation should be had.
Great. Thank you. How do you foster effective communication and collaboration between town staff, elected officials, and the community? And if you can share an example that you've had in the past?
So can you, can you repeat that? How do I foster?
Basically, foster effective communication between everybody, between, you know, town hall, the staff, elected officials, and the community.
Yeah. Again, I, and that's, it just sounds like we're talking about communication. And communication is the theme. But I think that's the way you do. You've got to, you've got to communicate to your staff what the expectations are. And I think, from my standpoint, it's about making sure everybody understands that we need to be fully transparent. We're here because of the citizens of whatever community we're talking about, in this case, Dartmouth. So we should be able to communicate with them. But there should be an understanding of what that communication looks like and where it's coming from. So depending on what the issues are, you know, so if it's, if it's an item that's gonna have to deal with the media, it should go through the town administrator's office to ensure that the messaging is coming from the board of selectmen down to the community and that we understand what it is. But if it's just normal day-to-day communication with the, with the residents, it's customer service is paramount. That's, that's the first thing we need to understand. And we need to understand how we communicate to residents. We've got to recognize that, you know, especially if you're going into the collector's office. A lot of times, people are gonna go pay taxes, and they're not happy about paying taxes. And we've got to recognize that we're gonna have some disgruntled individuals who are upset because their tax bill went up or their trash bill went up. But how we communicate that and how we transmit that communication is important. Same thing with the building department. You know, that's typically has always been a big struggle is building commissioners, building inspectors get very, very frustrated because they constantly deal with general contractors who are just sometimes stubborn and difficult to deal with. And they lose sight of the fact that sometimes we have residents who come into, to the building department and are pulling a permit and are not used to the process. And they're frustrated about the process. Or they're being told something from their general contractor that's not true. So again, it comes back to having that empathy, putting yourself in their shoes and understanding, you know, what, why they're upset and making sure that, number one, we're de-escalating when we're having conversations with individuals who might be upset and we're communicating in a proper manner. Getting out information, I think that's imperative. We just need to try to promote every single department, use social media, use local TV access, any means that we can. We need to be transparent. Taxpayer money is funding every aspect of, you know, town government. So I think it's important to make sure that we're fully transparent.
Can you explain your approach to incorporate community feedback into town planning initiatives?
I think that's the most important part. We've got a number of projects in CCONC that we're currently going through. We just purchased a 60-acre posse, an old farm that we're looking to turn into some passive and active recreation. And there's a lot of concerns because it's in the middle of a neighborhood. So public hearings, that's an important part of having the input. And when we start talking about master planning, we talk about any type of long-term planning. You have to have the community's input. If not, we're all sitting behind our desks identifying what, what the community wants to see without having conversations. It makes absolutely no sense. We need to understand, you know, what the stakeholders want to see. It's their community. And we need to make sure that that's incorporated. And we also need to make sure that we're articulating our ideas and why we want to see certain things, or putting forward certain recommendations and how that fits with what the community wants to see. Unfortunately, we just had a large building project in CCONC, a new DBW facility, that was failed both at town meeting and at the ballot miserably. And I was a little disappointed by that. But unfortunately, times have changed. And, you know, CCONC is in a good financial position. But we need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, taxpayers have a lot on their plate right now. And when we start talking about, you know, senior citizens on fixed incomes, we need to recognize that. We need to recognize inflation rates. We need to understand what our residents are dealing with. And we've got to, we have to really kind of incorporate that into all our strategic planning. And if we lose sight of that, you know, you end up having initiatives that will fail and will fail miserably. And then you're not able to move forward and move the community forward if you don't have that input and buy-in. So that, to me, is the most important thing, is making sure that there is that buy-in from a community on anything we do.
I know you touched upon the next question from your previous answer, but I think we can probably get a little bit more from you. So town government is in the business of customer service. How do you see getting that message out to the departments and also to the staff, to the staff?
Yes. So there, again, there's no easy way to say, hey, we want customer service. That's, that's an easy thing to say. But to actually get it implemented, I think it takes time, right? So there needs to be, at least from my standpoint, is understanding how that department operates. And, you know, being, being in that department, watching it and seeing it and listening to residents that are coming in, that's, that's how you address it. So you have to almost address it issue by issue. You know, we make the mandate that it's, you know, customer service is paramount, all right? But are we actually moving that forward? I've had a conversation with a couple of individuals from, from the town of Dartmouth. And, you know, they've shared some concerns in terms of operational standpoints when they found out that I was, I was an applicant. So it was at my daughter's basketball practice. And she, she plays for Dartmouth Metro West. So I had the opportunity to see, see a resident who was at a selectman meeting. And he, we talked about 30 minutes about his perception of the building department, Department of Public Works, and his interaction, and how he feels that it's not user-friendly. And we just talked about it. So when you hear those conversations, you need to bring it back to the department heads. You need to make them aware that this may be a perception, might not be reality. But we need to recognize if it's not reality and it's a perception, then we need to cheat, we need to change how the department's being perceived. If it's reality, then we need to correct the actions, whether it's a particular employee that's constantly having issues with contractors or whatever the case may be. So it's gonna take some time. It's, you know, we can, we can sit here and wave the big stick and say, okay, customer service, customer service. But we need to really dial it down and make sure that we identify where the breakdown is and get them the resources. Maybe there's training that's needed. You know, we need to understand, potentially, a lot of times, a lot of the issues is a lack of training. So we need to invest in our employees and the departments and make sure that they have the support and resources that are needed to do their job. A lot of times, that customer service and the breakdown comes down to stress and frustration. And again, that, that sometimes leads to a lack of support from the town or the town administrator's office. So we've got to identify that and recognize what the root cause of this lack of customer service is.
So budgeting and maintaining the budgets is an effort by many in the town, but the town administrator is seen as the leader. So what experience do you have, pretty much iron no, but what experience do you have developing and implementing long strategic plans for the town, for a town?
So I've, I've done that with the city of Fall River, $350 million budget. Had some significant issues when I first took that job. Their cash flow was a mess. It was taking us roughly six months to pay vendors. And that was on a good payment schedule. Budget deficits, went through the entire process, had a significant turnover in the financial team when I first arrived in Fall River. So I was really kind of thrown into the fire. And I, and I often tell department heads, the best learning is getting thrown into the fire. That's where you really learn the most. And I had the opportunity to get thrown into the fire. My first month in, I got a call from the Department of Revenue saying that they weren't gonna certify our tax rate because we had six years' worth of outstanding audits. And a prior administration had promised to have six years of audits completed within a month. So there was, there was a struggle back and forth. When I first arrived with the city, I had, I started in May. The budget was due in June, and it wasn't even put together, a $300 million budget. So I had less than a month to put together that budget. Obviously, not by myself, worked with the finance team and the department heads to get that done. So that was, that was my initial foray with putting and actually building a municipal budget. Now, I've done it on the school department as a school committee member, you know, obviously not putting together a budget, but then have, have been part of the budget process. But the city of Fall River was the first time that I actually had to put together a municipal budget. So that was, that was interesting. And then, you know, every year since, that was what I've done. And then over in CCONC for the last 10 years, we do have a director of finance, but I've, I've always taken the lead on the budget process.
How do you prioritize and manage multiple complex projects with tight deadlines?
So it's prioritizing, making sure, one, it's a conversation, again, that open line of communication with, with the board to identify what the priorities are. And if there ever is a situation where you've got competing priorities, that's, that's where you go back to the board and say, you know, we've, we've got two projects. We just can't get both of them done. So tell me which one it is that we want to focus in on. Outside of that, from my standpoint, you know, we're always pulled in a, in a million different directions. And my mindset is, is we just need to get it done. So it truly is trying to figure out. And sometimes it's bringing on additional people that normally wouldn't be doing it. So if you need to bring in a different department head who might be able to assist with something, then we need to have those conversations and bring in additional members from the team to help support, even if it's only in the short term, to get these initiatives done. And sometimes that happens. And other times, you're just running yourself then to make sure that you, you're completing everything you need to complete in a timely manner.
What are your key considerations on allocating funds for capital improvement projects?
Prioritizing. It's the priority. And I will say that part of the, the biggest challenge is, is that the larger departments always tend to take priority, right? So your, your building department, your treasurer's office, your finance departments, your counseling on aging tends to get the less priority in terms of capital needs because they're smaller departments. But those are conversations with, with department heads. And I've had these conversations in building budgets and talking about the needs and what is needed in the community, understanding that there are a number of competing interests. While yes, public safety is probably the most important part of any community, so is the senior center, so is the library, and so is the treasurer's office and the, you know, the building department. So we need to make sure that any request that we are putting forward, that we're truly identifying what the need is. So if you can hold off a year, and it makes sense to hold off a year, then we need to hold off a year so that these small departments can also get what they need. And it's, and it's just honest conversations with department heads to understand that, you know, we need to be able to have that balance. And if we're having those conversations and we're having the strategic plans, then we'll be able to get everybody what they need based on the strategic planning. But we need to be honest with ourselves. And any, anytime we go back to town meeting, we need to make sure that we absolutely need it, right? So I tell my department heads, we can't be pigs about the fact that we want to take all, all the tax money and just stop putting it in just because we need new vehicles. Is it truly needed? Have we done everything that we needed to do? Are we maintaining our vehicles? So we want to make sure that we're not abusing the money that's being allocated.
How would you handle a situation where a significant budget shortfall is discovered mid-year?
So again, that would be a conversation with the finance directors. And one, just identify how that happened. Two, that'd be a conversation with the board of selectmen immediately to identify that we've identified a potential deficit within the budget, or we'll be anticipating closing the year with a deficit. Conversation with finance committee as well to have that conversation, to discuss that. Then internally, we need to identify how we're gonna address it. So are we putting hiring freeze, doing spending freezes? Are we going back, looking at the revenue to make sure that we haven't made a mistake? And then identifying, going through every line item in the budget to identify what the actual needed expenses would be. And that's all that would be spent moving forward. I've had significant experience with that. In the city of Fall River, in 2010, we had nine C cuts. So we had mid-year cuts coming from the governor, and that was pretty significant. So that's exactly what we did. We, we did hiring and spending freezes.
So with that, how would you approach identifying cost savings measures within a municipal budget while maintaining essential services? But in addition, describe your process for developing and presenting a comprehensive annual budget.
So I, the, everybody catchphrase out there is zero-based budgeting. So I don't typically do zero-based budgeting because I don't start from scratch. But we, we tend to do a three-year trend analysis, and we'll go line by line to identify exactly what is needed. And the reason I say it's not zero-based budgeting, because zero-based budgeting is truly identifying every single cost associated with it. I always have some type of buffer in the budgets just to account for the unforeseen, because I, you need to be able to, to deal with the unforeseen. So we typically use that, review that three-year trend analysis, whether it's electric heat, if it's office expenses, if it's overtime, having those conversations, discussions about and analyzing how we can kind of make those improvements. So if we're talking about significant overtime, does it make more sense to add staff that would minimize the overtime? Or is that just gonna increase additional costs? How can we provide additional cost savings? You know, is it, can we potentially have discussions with other departments to look at doing some type of joint purchase with some type of, you know, expenses, whether it be paper or maintenance for vehicles, things of that nature, reaching out to other communities and seeing if there's ways that we can do joint purchases to try to bring down some of the costs and bring up our purchasing power in terms of buying in bulk and identifying things like that. So those are a lot of conversations that we would have. Again, all of that has organically happened through in the budget process, multiple meetings with department heads as they put together their budget, internal conversations about why they're requesting, what it is that they're requesting. And then just asking honest questions and getting that back and forth, going to identify different, different categories that might be able to be reduced.
Can you describe your position on the balance of environmental and natural resources protection, economic growth, and municipal revenues? And how do you achieve such a balance besides juggling?
That's a, that's a loaded question.
That's why it's there.
Yes. No, no. So it's, it's difficult. But I, but I think it comes back down to strategic planning. So it, you should never find yourself in a position where those three are conflicting. If you're doing your planning properly, you truly shouldn't be at that place. You should be identifying potential shortfalls in revenue, you know, three, four, five years out, and then begin to identify how you're gonna deal with that. And anything you put forward in, from a budgetary standpoint, it has to be sustainable. That's, that's one of my messages. And it's been my message since, in CCONC, since, you know, I've been there since 2014. It's always putting forward sustainable budgets. We were lucky enough not to have any layoffs or any reductions during the pandemic. You know, many, many communities saw that we didn't. We were able to, you know, push right through. But those conversations need to be had, again, with other departments, committees, elected officials. So when we're dealing with conservation, understanding what the restrictions are, what the needs are. Economic development, having those discussions early on. I watched one of the board meetings where you were doing your tax rate. And I think it was Mr. Santos from the assessors office that had mentioned that the new growth, only 10 new houses. And maybe I missed, I didn't hear him properly. But that, to me, is just mind-blowing that there was only 10 new houses that were put in for, for development, for new growth, especially the size of Dartmouth. CCONC's, you know, a quarter of the size. And we've, we've got, you know, more houses going up and developments going up. We've got some concerns on, on the commercial side that we need to address in the Route 6. But that's changing the mindset of the community and identifying what that looks like. But that comes back to your master plan, which I see was just completed in 2023, discussions with conservation, discussions with the planning board, discussions with the board of selectmen to say, okay, we, we've identified some issues. How do we address it as a group and as a team so that we're all on the same page? But again, if you have the appropriate planning, you shouldn't find yourself in that position. Not to say that you don't need to pivot at times, because obviously there, there are times where you, you would need to pivot because you can't anticipate everything. But those conversations should be had upfront.
Can you give us any experience in securing grants?
So I, I do most of the grant writing internally for my, for myself. I've actually just put that out to one of my department heads, so my assistant treasurer. We gave her a stipend to do the grants. But I work with We gave her a stipend to do the grants, but I work with her on, on all the grants, working with the fire department, police department to get those grants. So essentially I've been a grant manager my entire time in, in CCONC.
Experience, what experience do you have managing the prioritizing the use of enterprise funds revolving accounts and free cash?
So the only enterprise fund we have in CCONC was, is our, our, um, solid waste, but I've, in the city of Fall River, we have water sewer. We had solid waste at the, at the time. We, we no longer have solid waste. So I've, I have a, a ton of experience managing the enterprise funds, understanding, you know, the, the user fee rates associated with that and the retained earnings that come into that. In terms of free cash, managing free cash, you know, that, that's what I do. I, I've, I've put that, a policy in place actually with the town of CCONC with the board of selectmen to identify how free cash is going to be spent, to build up some of our stabilization accounts. So we've, we've put a number of new stabilization accounts to help relieve some of the burden on the taxpayers. CCONC has been notorious for doing debt exclusions on all projects. When I first got there, that was the first time I've ever experienced that because in the city of Fall River, we've never, ever even considered doing a debt service, nor would we ever suggest doing a debt service. I, I think we would be run out of, out of the city if we suggested that. So then going to a community that that's what they expected and then hearing a lot of pushback in terms of support for projects. I did have conversations with the finance committee and the board of selectmen early on, trying to get them to reconsider their approach. One of the members was not happy with my, my discussion on that, but from my standpoint, I, I think if we're talking about, you know, looking out for the taxpayers and, and understanding the different demands, that I felt that some of these projects needed to be captured within our operational budget so that we're building some of that debt service into the operational budget so we're not constantly going to the, to the taxpayers. Just looking at, you know, Dartmouth statistics, when you look at 41.5% of the households that have, have at least one person that's over the, of, of the age of 65 or over. Then you have 24.4% of single family homes of that 65% are of the age of 65 and older. So when we start talking about debt exclusions, when we start talking about overrides, we need, truly need to understand that there's a significant impact for those individuals in the community that are on fixed income. And I think that's my responsibility to make sure that when we're putting forward proposals to the board of selectmen or to town meeting, that we understand what the financial impacts are to the, to the residents. And, and that's a lot of the conversations that need to take place. So it's important to make sure from a strategic standpoint, the financial policies are in place that we're building up stabilization funds. We're talking about what's coming down the road. Every community is dealing with the unfunded liability with the pensions and, and the significant cost to get that fully funded. Conversations that we had early on in, in CCONC was, once the pension fund is completed, I personally feel, and there's no guarantee, but OPEB funds, other post-employee benefits are going to be a requirement similar to the pension to be fully funded. We need to start having those conversations. We started maybe about five or six years ago. In CCONC, we created a trust fund for that. That's been funded, we're probably about 12% funded on that number. And again, that's a, that's a moving target. And unfortunately for anybody who's familiar with OPEB, that's just money that's going to sit in that account that's essentially wasted in the event that the town ever goes bankrupt to be able to maintain retiree healthcare. So I don't know of, of many communities that have gone bankrupt, but unfortunately that's a requirement that we have there. So we, we've built up that trust fund. We've also negotiated in collective bargain agreements similar to pensions and we've got all the unions to buy into this as that percentage comes out of their paycheck to fund the, the trust fund. It's minimal, but we, we've done that and we essentially with the town have self-funded that to that first initial year payment to, into the OPEB. So we've, we've built that. But part of that conversation is again, the strategic planning that's needed and understanding the impacts that we have on the taxpayers.
Working cooperatively with all the town departments is key to any municipal's success, but especially Dartmouth. A public works department includes water, sewer, solid waste and recycling, fleet management, construction, road maintenance. How would you work with that department and the board to prioritize projects?
So the only thing I'm a little not sure of is, is I know the talent, during the search committee, one of the questions was asked was what, what's the biggest challenge that I, I see? And the fact that the town in Dartmouth is very decentralized with different departments. So I, I think that's probably going to be the biggest challenge is making sure that you somehow get that more centralized and that we're all on the same page in terms of priorities. But again, to, to answer your question, that's a conversation with the committee and the DPW director in terms of what their priorities are and what their vision, vision is for, for the, the department. And then how does that in turn compare to what the board of selectmen has in terms of what your goal is and, and expectations are for the department? And how do we, if they're far apart, how do, how do we get to a, a, a similar set of standards that we want to see and, and expectations? And then it's also conversations about what the costs are and, and how do we fund that, right? And there's a lot of conversations that need to take place. Is it through free cash? Is it through debt exclusions? Are we, are we using stabilization accounts? But it's really trying to identify what the actual needs are and how significant the needs are. So end-of-life items, like when, when are those items going to be end-of-life? When do we need to, you know, repair them? And then once we get to that plan, it's, it's also just really making sure we're getting on a, a schedule to, to replace all this equipment that, that's needed, especially when you start talking about water and sewer and, and the sewer facilities. I mean, the infrastructure over there is, is, I'm sure you're fully aware, is, is very expensive and we need to make sure that they're being maintained properly on a, on a yearly basis, so.
What are your views on municipal-run utilities versus privatization?
Any in particular or, I think I got different opinions on, on, on different ones.
Big encompassing thing.
So I, so I, I still, I still think that the utilities should be managed by a community. That's not to say that you can't bring in a consultant to maintain and, and deal with the operation. The city of Fall River outsources the sewer treatment facility, so we don't handle that. We outsource it. We oversee the day-to-day implementation, so if there's the, the pipes and the, and the infrastructure in the ground, we, we maintain. Water, we do everything internally for the, for the water, so that there's, there's some discussion that can be had. We privatized the trash service in the city of Fall River. It, it hasn't had the savings that everybody thought it was going to have when you start talking about overhead and things of that nature. Sometimes I think it's a lot easier to control issues internally when you have that control dealing with employees. But that's to say that, you know, I, I think depending on which department we're talking about, what the issues are surrounding it, privatization might make sense, but you have to do the analysis. It needs to make sense long-term, not just short-term because I, I think a lot of times we get so blinded by the initial savings and we lose sight of the long-term impacts and the costs that we, we potentially have. You get that first contract for anybody coming in to, to privatize, they always give you a nice little deal. And then, you know, five years or 10 years of the second year of that contract, you'll see a significant rate increase, you know? So you, you got to be able to, to weigh that and, and see what makes the most sense. What I will say is, is that I, I think we need to do a better job from all municipalities about regionalizing. When we start talking about the tech, uh, sewer and water, it's a very, very technical service that we provide to the community. The biggest issue we're finding, and it's not just in those two categories, is, is being able to find people to number one, manage, you know, the water and sewer departments and to have the certifications and the licenses that are required. And that, that also goes to, you know, it's, it's difficult to find treasurers, it's difficult to find building inspectors now. Gone are the days where, you know, people are running to go in and work for the public sector. They either want to work for the private sector or we're finding that a lot of folks don't want to work anymore. So, you know, there's, there's that challenge that we have in terms of trying to make sure that you, you've got good people in, in those positions.
So you, you touched upon it a little bit, but the aging population in Dartmouth is on the rise, highlighting the pressing need for increased services and support for the council on aging. The growing senior demographic necessitates proactive measures to enhance the quality of life and wellbeing of our aging residents. How would you prioritize services to support the aging population within our town and collaborate with local agencies and town departments in addition to also addressing the homelessness issue in our town?
So first I'll, I'll deal with the senior population because the homeless population is, is something that I think is, is a little bit different, but when we're dealing with human services, they, they do tie in together. Dealing with the senior population, I, I think the biggest part is, one, making sure that the individuals that we have in human services are really reaching out to our senior, seniors. Human services in CCONC, you know, during COVID, we, we reached out to every single senior to make sure that they were okay, that they didn't need anything, and identifying any type of services that were required or even just whether there were supplies that they needed. And my human service director did a phenomenal job. She, she went out, she worked with food pantries, she worked with nonprofits to get all the services that were required or, or the supplies that were needed and, and actually delivered dur- during the pandemic. But that carries over to the day-to-day operations. We had migrant issues over in, in CCONC at the, the hotels. And unfortunately, the state just dropped migrants off zero support, zero services. And, and it becomes frustrating and it's frustrating as an administrator when, when that happens because one, you know, when, we don't have the resources that we need to deal with our veterans, we don't have the resources, the adequate resources, I should say, to deal with our veterans and our, our seniors. And then we get issues where, you know, migrants are thrown into our hotels with, with zero services and now we're forced to pivot and then take some additional resources away from seniors and veterans to, to service that. So it becomes a challenge and it's, and it's frustrating, but part of that and part of the learning process was is that you need to be able to advocate, number one, for your community. You need to be able to advocate and build relationships at the state level to be able to have these discussions and conversations and work with state representatives to make sure that they understand what the needs are. So we, we need all, all different agencies. We can't just do it alone with, with the departments that we have in, in the town of Dartmouth. So we need to have that support. And we need to make sure that we're utilizing, you know, the state formula grants properly and, and providing those types of services to the seniors. Again, communication, making sure that we're reaching out to the seniors to understand what it is that they're needing, what type of activities they want to see at the senior center and making sure that we're providing that. And if we can't provide it, is there another organization or another community that, that is able to, to offer up those types of services? In, in terms of homelessness and, and dealing with that situation is, is just, it's, it's a national situation. If, if there was an easy solution to it, we wouldn't have any, any homelessness, but the problem is, is that it's multifaceted. So it's either mental illness or addiction. So there, there are a lot of folks who are homeless that choose to be homeless. I've been in a number of encampments myself, visited them, had conversations, trying to understand why it is that they're there. So making sure that there is wraparound services for the homeless, you know, mental health services, health services and, and getting those individuals to where they need to be. You know, part of the conversation is also, and my, my frustration is, is with the, you know, the sheriff's office, you know, the releasing of inmates without a actual location to go to. And I know they're supposed to have, have a home, but especially in the city of Fall River, there's a lot of people who are coming out of Bristow County corrections without an actual place to live. They've identified an address, but it's not a real address and then they're on the streets. Those, those are some of the conversations that, that need to be had. But again, we need to recognize that it's, it's not just the fact that they're homeless, that there is some additional wraparound services that are going to be needed. So that's conversations with the police department, that's conversations with the EMS fire department, human services, working with the state reps to make sure that we've identified some funding sources to, to make sure that that wraparound services are there. It's also discussions with private public partnership. We, we may need to be able to put up some additional revenue or resources and, and tie that in with other private resources that are out there, whether it's healthcare industry and things of that nature. So that's a little bit more challenging, especially when folks don't, don't want to get the help or they're struggling to understand that they need the help. So that, that becomes a, a challenge and it's, it's not something that you can easily fix.
So in our town, probably in most, school department represents half the town spending or a little bit more. How do you, how would you develop a relationship with the school department and school committee to promote their needs along with the ever-growing needs of the whole town?
Isn't that every community? More than, more than 50%. So I, I started my public career on the school committee, so I, I truly, truly am passionate about education. It was a little bit of a struggle going from a school committee member to a city administrator and then understanding that you've got competing interests when the only hat you wore, wore was the one that you were just fighting for, educational dollars. And I came from a community and I come from a community that struggles to meet net school spending. So that's a whole different conversation when you, when you're not at net schools, minimum net school spending. In the town of CCONC, you know, when I went over there, I quickly realized, especially attending my first town meeting, which is an open town meeting, that there was not a whole lot of trust with the school department. So I, I quickly realized that I, one, I wanted to change it and I needed to change that, that perception. So I worked with the superintendent, we had conversations on how we could do that. And there was a little bit of a disconnect and it was the town versus education. And I've been there before, especially in the city of Fall River, where you stop pitting one department versus another, whether it's public safety versus education or it's the city versus education. And I can tell you that nobody wins. There is absolutely no winner coming out of that. Somebody might be walking out with more funding, but at the end of the day, there's no true value in that. So one of the things I did with the superintendent was we ended up setting up quarterly meetings, just her and I, so that we've removed politics, we've had conversations, we've included the finance director, my finance director and her business manager to have those candid conversations of what was needed. And we could, we could just have those, again, candid conversations without any politics involved and seeing what was truly needed. And then we also collaborated a little bit more and said, okay, now in order for us to be able to get this messaging across and get everybody on the same page, I suggested that not only do we do these quarterly meetings, but we also have a quarterly meeting where it's myself, my finance director, and then it's the chair of the board of selectmen who meets on a quarterly basis with the superintendent, business manager and the chair of the school committee to have these conversations about what's coming down the pipeline, how can we help, understanding the different priorities that need to take place. I will say it's a, it's a, it's a tough conversation, very similar to the, to the town of Dartmouth. CCONC's enrollment numbers are, are decreasing. And I believe, I actually have the numbers here. So 2009, 2010 enrollment numbers were at 4,000 for, for Dartmouth. 2021, you're at 3,400. So you see a decrease in enrollment, but the cost of providing an education has increased, so you've got that inequity there. And I often say this and, and I know schools and superintendents don't like when I say this, but all school department budgets are unsustainable. The school department gets funding from the town, they never truly need to do a balanced budget. And that's part of the conversation and given back and forth that I've had with the superintendent is understanding that at the end of the day, I've got to present a balanced budget. And there are competing needs that need, that are taking place, there are different priorities, so we need to be able to work together in terms of what that looks like. So one year there may be a, a 3% increase in funding, maybe the next year it's when we can, when priorities are a little bit different, maybe it's a 5% or 6% increase. But it's all based on those conversations that we have on a quarterly basis to truly identify what the needs are, right? We can, we can sit here and talk about all the wants, but we need to understand what the needs are and we need to make sure that we know what it truly is required to provide an appropriate education for the community and balancing that with public safety, with DPW and all the other departments.
Great, thank you. Land use permitting has become very complicated for owners and contractors alike. They must navigate the interest that town departments must administer as delegated by state and local legislative actions. How will you ensure that the departments of the, of the town are functioning as a collaborative unit and not in a vacuum to ensure interdepartmental matters are coordinated with land use permitting and will not lead to fractured functionality that will result and will not lead to fractured functionality that will result in adverse relations with the public, fester in inefficiency of the departments, and create added costs to the town and the property owner?
It's going to sound simple, but it goes back to these department head meetings. So the inspectional services, making sure that we're all on the same page, having these conversations. And again, it's, what I found has been effective is joint meetings with the board of selectmen, planning board, to discuss issues that are ongoing. And internally, we need to do a better job of streamlining the process. It is, the permitting process is very convoluted and is not user-friendly. And I think we need to remember, and I often have to remind folks, that, again, we are customer service-based. We are here to service, serve the residents. And whether that's our constituents or that's developers, we need to understand that we're providing a service. So how do we make it more user-friendly? I know you folks have OpenGov online permitting, so that's a good start in making sure that everybody is on the same page and understanding where they are in the process, the permitting process. The other piece is when we start and talk about subdivisions and subdivision control laws, that is just so antiquated, where a developer can open up an LLC, put together a development, and decide that they're going to go bankrupt with that LLC, not finish the project, move on to another project, do the exact same thing, and then you've got four or five different subdivisions that are not completed and have not been accepted by the town in terms of the roadway. Those conversations are larger. Those are conversations, and I've tried to have those conversations with representatives and at the state level. And it's been somewhat of a challenge to get them to understand that it's not just, you know, CCONC, it's not just Dartmouth, it's not just Fall River, it's 351 communities that are dealing with this. Unfortunately, you know, special interest groups have lobbyists, and they fund different legislation that goes, and that's what we're competing with. And that's, has been very clear that that's what we're having to fight. So those conversations need to continue to happen. We need to be able to continue to advocate for those changes in order to make, you know, the development and the enforcement and accountability change as well when we start talking about land use and things of that nature.
What are the key challenges regarding smart growth facing towns similar to Dartmouth, such as CCONC? And how would you address them?
So again, I mean, a lot of these challenges, if they, if, if there was an easy solution, I think every community would have it. But again, it comes back down to planning, it's a conversation. Smart growth, again, you need to have a master plan, you need to understand what it is the community is looking for. And it's a partnership, you know, at the state level, and it's also going to be a partnership at the local level in terms of what that truly looks like. So I wish I had an easier answer for you, but it truly is getting people at the table and having the conversations of what does it look like? When we start talking about growth, though, you know, local receipts are, you know, kind of capping off a little bit. So, you know, when you start looking at revenue coming in, communities need growth. You know, you're not going to be able to sustain just on the taxes that we have if you don't have new growth coming in, if you don't have the additional local receipts. The expenses, salaries that are going, that are taking place now, they're growing exponentially. And meanwhile, you know, our revenues are truly leveling off. So we've got to be able to compete and understand that. And part of that is growth in a community. So, you know, what does it look like from an economic development standpoint? Do we need to do a better job of trying to do recruitment and have that balance? But the big part is understanding what the community wants. Because if you're trying to shove down some type of plan that not everybody is in agreement with, you're going to have those challenges, they're going to be met with objections, and we're going back and forth. But I don't know that I have the answer. If I did, I think I might be.
I don't think anybody has the answer.
I might be a millionaire just consulting on smart growth, but it's a challenge.
And now to the final category of our questions, more specific to the position. Can you explain your understanding of relevant state laws and the regulations that impact municipal operations?
Extremely familiar with Massachusetts general law. You know, my department heads will tell you that I'm often quoting Massachusetts general law. It's just something that I've, for whatever reason, I remember and pick up on. It's a lot of conversations. We have KP Law in CCONC, so I have a number of conversations on a number of topics, and we're going back and forth. And it's always a reference point to Massachusetts general law. Even before I call KP Law, it's a quick Google search in terms of MGLs to see, you know, what's out there regarding whatever issue it may be, whether it's, you know, the board of selectmen, who has the authority, you know, finance law, whether it's 30B, whether it's health insurance, 32B, things of that nature.
How would you stay informed about the emerging trends in local government best practices?
Just staying involved with the MMA and associations. You know, I'm big into making sure that we're part of that. And that's one of the takeaways as well, is that, you know, department heads, I force department heads to be part of their organizations as well. So the building department, DBW, a lot of times, department heads will push back, saying that they don't have enough time to go to these association meetings and things of that nature. But there's something to be said about being able to be in a room with your colleagues and understand what they're dealing with and how they're identifying solutions to different problems. So I often force, not strongly, in a nice way, force them to make sure that they're partaking, whether it be in a syruphead meeting or MMA meetings. And I often send department heads to a lot of the trainings as well. But from my standpoint, I was just at the MMMA conference in Sturbridge today, just talking about, you know, with ethics today. So there's something to be said about that, and there's always updates in terms of what's going on at the state house and different bills. The economic bill just got passed, so there was conversations about that. So that's how I stay abreast of that.
Do you currently have any designations or credentials that are essential for this position?
MCPPO certified, so that's my purchasing certificate. I received a certification with Suffolk and MMA, and actually was held here two years ago. So I spent 26 Fridays in the room next door. So I quickly noticed that the break room was upgraded, so kudos to you folks. Yes, I believe those are my only certifications that I have, yeah.
I know you know, I know you know this, but there's always more work than time to do it. So how do you go about organizing your day?
So I don't typically like to organize my day, because as soon as I do that, it doesn't go the way I planned it to go. But realistically, I identify and prioritize what I need to do. So I typically start with my emails first, making sure that there are no major issues. So I only like to spend 30 minutes in the morning dealing with the emails, and then, you know, closing out my day that way. But then it's just prioritizing what issues I have going on. So if it's department head meetings, whether it's building projects that need to take place, building meetings, just going right down that list based on priorities.
And the last set of questions, the last question of the set, is what would you like for us to know about you or your candidacy that really we haven't touched upon in any of the questions?
Yeah, so I guess I would just like to tell you who I am as a person. I think part of any type of position is identifying the fit and the need. And I talked a little bit about the fact that I feel like I know you folks because I've been binge-watching board of selectmen meetings. And part of that is, number one, to try to understand what the issues were for Dartmouth, but two, to see your personalities, to make sure it was a fit for me. I can tell you that, you know, the first thing, the most proud thing that I have to offer up is that I am a dad of two beautiful children. So my daughter is 12, my son's 11, I'm sorry, she's going to kill me, my daughter's 13, my son's 12.
Once they hit their teens, you've got to be careful.
So my daughter is heavily into basketball, so she's doing AAU, and she is part of Dartmouth Metro West, so all her friends are Dartmouth-related. Applying for this job, I will tell you, Dartmouth feels like home on so many different levels. I'm not looking for a job, I actually just got my contract renewed, so I'm good for three years. I'm not putting my name out to any other community. I've always had an interest in Dartmouth, and that comes from my Dartmouth connections. I went to Bishop Stang, graduated from Bishop Stang. When I started my career in Fall River, there is, I have a mentor from Dartmouth. We were having financial issues, I hired Ed I. Capone as a consultant. So Ed I. Capone was instrumental into my initial growth going into municipal government. And just listening to his stories, everything was Dartmouth-related. So leaving Fall River, I had always said that if the opportunity ever arose to be able to apply for Dartmouth, I would take that. That being said, CCONC has been home for the last just about 11 years. It was a very difficult decision for me. We've, I've built relationships with the team, and I enjoy the team that we have. So I have no real reason to leave, other than Dartmouth does feel like home. Everything that I do on the weekends, or even during the week, is in Dartmouth. My daughter does, she dominates my schedule. So during the summers, we're at the bucket. My son and my daughter are playing basketball at BBA. You know, as I mentioned before, you know, I spent 26 Fridays here. So everything does revolve around Dartmouth. I will also just give a little selfless plug for, if there's, I know it's not being televised tonight, but for school committee members, my daughter is highly interested in school choice. She wants to actually play basketball for Dartmouth. So I will throw that out there to school committee members that may be watching. School choice is a great thing, and my daughter wants to be part of that. But, you know, I am up here several times, sometimes even on the weekend, several times a day. My daughter just had basketball practice next door over at the middle school. So it does feel like home from a community standpoint. I've got friends that live in Dartmouth. So it was very intriguing to, and the timing was, made a lot of sense for me to be able to apply. Again, still a challenge for me to be able to, number one, tell my department heads, people I have grown with, and built relationships that go beyond just coworkers, to tell them that I've actually applied somewhere else, that was very, very difficult. But it was also humbling at the same time to see all the response that I've gotten from every single one of them to support me in my endeavor to move forward. I don't think that you'll be able to find another applicant that has the experience that I've had. I've served in almost every part of municipal government, from the school committee to an administrator, to the legislative aspect of it. I've experienced almost everything that you can possibly experience, from 9C cuts, having to almost not get your tax rate certified, having to go to the, you know, the state house to be able to have, use the state's bond rating, been through all that legislative process as well. So I'm uniquely positioned to be able to hit the ground running and serve the town of Dartmouth. That being said, I don't claim to know everything, and part of it is making sure that I understand what the needs are of Dartmouth, and that's going to be having conversations with you folks and department heads and employees to understand what Dartmouth truly is and what the needs are. But I'm more than confident that I'd be able to serve the community appropriately.
Okay, so at this point, what we're going to do is we're going to turn it over to the members. Each one has, you know, some questions to ask, may have followed up on some of your answers. So I'm going to start with Mrs. Brooks, and then go to Mr. O'Neil, and then Mr. Mickelson, then Mr. Tattlebaum.
So I probably have one of the shorter ones or easier ones. But if I were to plug your name into Google, what's going to turn up that I would like you to explain tonight, rather than at another time where we might have a different conversation?
I don't think that you'd find anything out of the ordinary. I think what you would find is that I'm active in the community. Pretty straightforward, there's not a whole lot that I think you would find that would, that I think that would require a lot of explanations.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Sean, just a couple of quick ones. How many direct reports do you have now? What's the largest number of direct reports that you've had? And also, you've been in the administrative position for a while. What's the most satisfying part of it personally for you? And what's the most frustrating part of it? Thank you.
You're welcome. So currently, I'm at 15 direct reports, department heads. For the city of Fall River, I was probably, I don't know the exact number, I'd have to guess, but 25 to 30, you know, 1,500 employees. So the second part, what's the most satisfying about the job? Is that?
Yes, if, personally, for you, in any administrative job, what do you think has been the most satisfying part, and what's been most frustrating for you?
The most satisfying is just serving the community and doing it in a way where you can move a community forward. I take a lot of pride in that, I think I've done a phenomenal job in CCONC. And being an administrator is a thankless job. So to be able to have residents come up and appreciate and acknowledge and see the changes that have been made for the betterment and the improvement of quality of life, to me is probably the most satisfying part of that, to see the impact that you can have on somebody's personal life and the quality of life that they have as a resident. The most frustrating is, I would say, the politics. That's probably the most challenging and frustrating is that. And I would say the small-town politics, where it becomes personal, and we lose sight of the benefit and why we're really here. I think that, I could do away with, without that aspect of it. But that's something that, you know, we've all got to manage. I try to minimize politics, but I understand we're in a political realm, and we just need to be able to manage it. But trying to remove that small-town politics is probably the most frustrating. It's most important to try to remove it, but it's the most frustrating part of it.
Great, thank you, Sean, thanks for applying.
All right, Mr. Mickelson?
I've got a few things. So when are you going to move here? You don't have to answer.
No, 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 it's okay, I would love to. I know, the real estate market is terrible, and I literally just bought my house a couple of years ago, and I do like my house, and I don't know that I'd be able to buy it at that price.
So Sean, what other positions in government or out of government are you presently involved in?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What are, what other positions in government or out of government are you presently involved in?
So the, in government, just the town administrator, and then I also serve as a city council in Fall River, which is the legislative body, so.
So in that case, if you were to get this job, would you resign your position as the city councilor?
So that would be a conversation with the board, what the board preferences is, so.
Would be a conversation, I'd just like to hear what your answer is.
Yep, so it would be, it would be a conversation. I think, you know, when I first applied and ran for city council, I had a conversation with the board of selectmen. The board in CCONC did not have an issue, if that's an issue with the board here. If offered the position, the only thing I would ask is that my term be allowed to be filled, finished.
What is your term?
It's one more year. And quite frankly, I've been 18 years in some aspect of government in Fall River. My work ethic is such that, you know, there's a lot of night meetings, obviously, as a town administrator. So I think on average, I average one day that I have no meetings between the town of CCONC and being on the city council. So I'm getting a little tired of that, but.
Big job, it's a big city, a town.
No, no, I.
Responsibility.
I recognize that, and I think.
With three times the size of what you're dealing with now.
I understand that. And I've also dealt with a larger municipality, 90,000 residents, so I'm fully aware of what it is. You know, sometimes when we start talking about the city council, and again, I, it's.
I just have one other thing. What, what do you know about ICMA bylaws? There was some kind of issue with the bylaw, code of ethics, or whatever. Do you remember that incident?
Do I remember it? Yes.
So can you expound on it, please?
Yeah, so, the mic might go off. So the ICMA, so they have a code of ethics, they do not allow you to run for elected office. The MMA. The MMA allows you to hold an elected position, so I was not aware of it when I joined, so there was a conversation about that, and there's, you know, they censured me on that, so I just, but I'm no longer part of the ICMA.
Right, there was a public censure, right?
Correct.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yeah, calling a little different angle. Looking at the numbers in CCONC, substantial commercial, in comparison, all they have to do is drive through a town, and there's commercial, retail everywhere, in comparison to the town of Dartmouth, where in the 10% range, I take it in CCONC, it's much, the revenue, commercial revenue is, what percentage, much higher.
Yes, it is.
And the average, just did a little math on my own, just, it's significant, the population's only 15,000, but the budget is in the 70s, considerable. I'm surprised by that. So you do have a source of revenue we don't have here. And we're, I'm trying to make a point here, and you did do your homework, which I do appreciate as well. My point here is that we're facing upwards of $300 million worth of spending over the next 30-plus years. You mentioned that we have the lowest expenditure per student, we're in the, the 10% of the low level of spending per student in the state. Our revenue is pretty stable, is constant, you mentioned that as well. This, and here we are, facing these gigantic issues going forward, as you know, you expounded on, you know, what they are. And it's going to require a job and a focus that I think is, in comparison to what you've had, it's been over these last 10 years, I don't think there's any comparison as to how intense this job is and what it's going to require. And from my perspective, looking at these numbers, and you're involved in Surpet, you're involved in, I'm taking this off your resume, and you're involved in the city of Fall River, which I understand there's a passion there for it, because you've been there in a resident, but those days, if you're coming here to Dartmouth, would be, in my, would be over.
Yeah.
Because this job requires, really, an intense participation on 24/7, and your attention in that regard. So listening to your response to Mr. Mickelson, and frankly, I think it's going to require an attitude that's different than what you kind of seem to give us. I think it requires a turnaround in your career.
So I guess I just want to clarify, so I'm okay with that, that's why I was saying it was a discussion with the board. If the board has no issue, then I'm okay with, you know, continuing to do what it is that I'm doing. My priority has always been the town of CCONC, so the board of selectmen has never had an issue. I've missed a number of meetings from the city council because there are competing interests. So if that's an issue, I can reassure you that it's not an issue.
I can only speak for myself, as you know.
That's why I want to clarify, so it's not, I'm not saying that it's non-negotiator. If that's what the board's desire is, the only thing I would ask is that you allow me to just finish out my term, and if that's not an option, then, you know, if Dartmouth is what I want, I'm committed to Dartmouth. It's not about that. And like I mentioned before, I don't know that, even if it's not an issue with this board, I don't know that I'd have a lot more terms in me anyway. So again, it's not really an issue from my standpoint. I just wanted to clarify that. And I recognize and appreciate what the board is saying, and I would, I fully expect you to say that Dartmouth is a priority. I wouldn't expect you to tell me anything else. And I would guarantee you that Dartmouth, if given the opportunity to be part of this team, Dartmouth will be a priority. You can talk to, you know, selectmen, past six selectmen, current selectmen. I've always made the town of CCONC a priority, that's just the only way I know how to operate. And quite frankly, you know, part of one of my weaknesses is the fact that I don't know how to strike that work-life balance, and a lot of my passion for performing has impacted, you know, my family life at times, so.
I'd say that, but you're moving up the ladder into a much more intense, and I for one would say that the rules will change on day one, to me personally, and that's what, and I can't only speak for myself.
So the only thing I would disagree with you is in terms of moving up the ladder, I don't know that CCONC is necessarily below Dartmouth. I think we have a lot of the same issues, landmass, you know, residents, higher residents, larger budget, but I do think, I don't want to dismiss what CCONC is and the challenges that CCONC has. CCONC is, even though it's only 18 square miles, 15,000 residents, it borders East Providence, it is a small municipality, it truly is, dealing with the issues there. So that's the only thing I would say, so. But I appreciate and recognize, and I do understand the challenges and have watched the board meetings, I understand what Dartmouth needs and is looking for.
One other question. You mentioned dealing dead exclusion, and I know that the town of Belmont does the same thing. They only look for projects on a year-to-year basis, on a dead exclusion, and that's the only, the benefit is that the entire town embraces the whole project, and they, everyone can vote and have a say, which, it has its benefits. But it failed, the most recent one you mentioned, and I, because we're going to be facing these same kind of issues going forward, whether we go for that or not. But looking back on that project, and the fact that it recently failed, and you did mention you had issues with some of the board members as well, what would you have done differently? What'd you learn by it as to how you go forward on that?
So the major reason it failed was it was a $40 million building project, and so probably the largest building project that the town of CCONC has had. When you start talking about building projects itself in municipalities, it's not necessarily a large project, but large compared to what CCONC was used to. So I, the only thing I would have changed would have been the makeup of the board, which I don't have control over. I think I would have gotten more a variety of stakeholders. I would have definitely had a member of the finance committee on the building committee. I think that's been part of the struggle and the breakdown with regard to that. But we were fully transparent in terms of that project, so I don't know that I would change that. That was the first building committee that actually I required go before the board of selectmen at every step of the construction project. So schematic design, design development, construction documents, you know, construction documents and going out to bid. So we've, at every point, we updated the board of selectmen with updated cost estimates, and we recognized that the cost was significantly higher than we anticipated, I mean significantly higher. We did a feasibility study in 2018, so prior to COVID. It wrapped up in COVID, and it was a $14 million project, that's what we presented. Square footage didn't change much, but the project then went to, at schematic designs, $50 million, so we had to scale that back, value engineer, so there was a lot of work going into it. Unfortunately, if I could change anything out of it, which I don't have any control, is just community participation. It is hard to get folks to attend public meetings, to be part of these meetings, to understand and listen to what's being said at building committee meetings.
This was a DPW building?
Facility, yep. And so then when we go to town meeting, then people are upset because of the price tag. But we identified to the board of selectmen that this is significantly higher than we anticipated, and it's just the cost of doing business. It was a simple steel garage structure to house our vehicles and save the investments that the town put into it. It was a small office space, but we went back to the board of selectmen with an option. So we said it was $40 million. We knew, essentially from my standpoint, when I said this to the department head, it was dead on arrival. I don't see this getting supported. But we brought it back before the board of selectmen with recommendations to eliminate the garage, take the salt shed, don't add a new salt shed, keep the salt shed at the old facility, the gas, the fueling stations at the old facility. But the board decided that they wanted to move forward with it, and that was the project. But we gave them the opportunity, knowing full well that most likely it would not be supported because of the price tag.
So nothing happened?
So, no, nothing happened, but we went out to bid, so we had actual costs that came forward, but we were fully transparent every step of the way.
Thank you.
Phrase that I don't particularly care for is value engineering, because I know what that means.
I just wanted to follow up on that, is what you have just stated and shared is that the project pre-COVID, 14 million, post-COVID, 40. Pre-COVID, or during COVID, you had a building project at the Mildred-Aiken Elementary School, which was significant, but it was successful.
10 million.
10 million.
10 million, yep.
But it was a beautiful wing.
It was, but unfortunately, I think a lot of the building projects that we have done in CCONC, we've been short-sighted, so some of these projects, we put $10 million addition, and the minute we opened it up, it wasn't enough. So we had a maker space in there, it's not being used, it's now a classroom, you know, music and art is still on a cart, so that was, when we talked about a $10 million project, that was to eliminate some of that stuff.
$10 million, I guess.
Items, so. But part of it, again, is having the conversation, especially with these building projects, is having the discussion and trying to fully articulate it to the community in terms of the benefits associated with it. A lot of conversation has been talked about phasing, and I try to push back on the phasing. We had a senior center, we purchased a commercial space when I first got into CCONC. The entire renovation, well, one half was renovated, it cost us $1.2 million. I tried to get the board of selectmen to go back to town meeting to get additional funding because it wasn't enough to do the entire building. They didn't want to do that because they felt like there wasn't going to be support. All we needed was an additional $300,000. We just completed the second phase, it cost us $1.9 million. And when I tell you it's literally tearing down walls, the largest part of that project was an elevator, and it cost us $1.9 million, so double the cost of what the first phase was. And so I guess the point I'm trying to make is trying to articulate to the community the needs and the reason for it, and getting them to understand, because not a lot of them are familiar with construction costs. And to tell them that a project was at a feasibility stage was estimated to be $14 million, is now $40 million, there's no way of truly explaining that to them, that they would truly appreciate it. You know, you have conversations and say everything, the price of everything has gone up, steel has gone up, and unfortunately, a lot of them don't want to hear that.
That's their building, they don't know.
All right, so that concludes our questions, so you now have the.
Could I just, I just noticed, one more quick question, if I may?
Quick.
Sorry. Regionalization. Do you have a positive feeling about it in terms of, or is it just going to be a minimal amount of things you can actually do?
I don't have a good feeling about it, and I think part of it is the power struggle with communities. So we had a conversation about potentially regionalizing our communication center, and then the discussion comes, well, who's going to control it, where is it going to be located? And you've got that battle back and forth with various communities. But there is more and more willingness to do joint purchases, right? So health insurance, energy, I'm sure you folks are doing the electric aggregation, we're all part of that. So those types of regionalization approaches are good, but services themselves, I don't see it. And then it also becomes about the liability, and who's carrying the employees and things like that. So I think eventually we're going to have to get there, because as I mentioned before, the cost of doing business is just skyrocketing, and the revenues that are coming in are just not keeping up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now we've reached the end.
Yes.
So the floor is yours. If you want to tell us anything more about yourself, or you have any questions of us, or you have the floor?
No, I, listen, I just want to thank you folks for the opportunity tonight to be able to be before you. As I mentioned before, I'm not looking to, I'm not actively applying in any other community. I am happy in CCONC, as I mentioned, I just received my renewal on my contract, which is not set to start until August. But if I do come to Dartmouth, I am not one of those individuals that look to jump to another community. I would be looking to stay long-term, that's what I would like to see. I know it's, you know, far few and between of administrators that are staying 30, 20, 20 years. I can tell you that it feels like 30 years in CCONC. Before I got there, they had 11 town administrators within a 12-year period. The over-under on my staying with CCONC was a year and a half, that was the, that was taking place internally, and now I'm on 11 years. So I think that's pretty significant when you look at other town administrators, especially staying in one location, you know, the average, very similar to superintendents, it's, you know, three, five years, and they're moving on to another community. That's not what I would be looking to do. But again, you know, I thank the board, I thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for coming, thank you for applying. It is the intent of this board to, after we adjourn, to basically cogitate, think about it. And we have our meeting Monday night, and we will be making a decision Monday night, come heck of high water, so.
I don't envy the position you're in, I've been on your side, trying to fill important department head roles, and so I know it's a very difficult challenge and a struggle to find the right.
This is my second time around, so.
Well, I wish you the best.
Thank you, thank you again, appreciate it. And make sure your daughter does good on the bachelor poll.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that being said, and since we have one person remote, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
It's moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by.
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. That seems to be a recurring theme of mine.
Theme, yes.
Yeah, really. Roll call vote, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, chair votes in favor. See you Monday night, everybody.